But my father walked in there to go to Jackson's. So, so all this line, you might be, well, there's, 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 and Jackson's. So I have to let you, just if they want to shut the gate, do they, do they, let the cable out and they went across to, uh, I think everyone's.
I'm sorry.
Hello, Susan.
Good morning, sir. Good thing you got that rain going out there.
Not enough, it'll work.
I know, we'll take every drop we can get.
Good morning, uh, we called order, the regular meeting of Trinity Bay Conservation District. Today is Wednesday, October 11th, 2023, 9:00 a.m. Begin with invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. And verity shall say our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory, amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honorable Texas flag, our pledge of allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one人民.
Have public comment, I don't have a list.
He did sign up, sir.
I don't believe he's the old one or not. Thank you. Max. Max?
Yes, sir, good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, last time I was here, I asked you for something well different actually, but I don't want to talk about it all over again. I asked you for some free water for the elderly. I've almost had it made again. What I was suggesting last time was free water for the elderly of some age, uh, seven, sixty-five, uh, people who live with, uh, a caregiver, somebody who doesn't live with extended family. And, uh, I put it off the paper for a discussion and some kind of a vote and it came some kind of a decision on that, uh, suggestion I made, uh. I, I was talking as, as, uh, my previous ran out last time about letting my people go. When COVID started, I, uh, I'd never seen anything like it. I, I heard what was talking about it on the news and they were talking about the Democrats responsible, their government was responsible. Some, uh, Chinese, uh, lab worker in a Canadian lab had stolen wires and taken them back to Ca- uh, China and it escaped. And so they were talking about, you know, it was moving into the United States and we started all the drills, uh, six feet and, uh, max. And, uh, we closed the, the bars, restaurants, and churches. And I said, churches? Who doesn't want to stay at church? I started reading Bible and it seems to me like asshole and COVID are a whole lot alike. They're both lakes. And Americans have a lot of lakes lately. We've had a lot of weather events. We've had a pretty much up on the beaches, we've had fires in California, Texas, all over the place. We're having a little problem right now, I guess the weather has caused a little problem with the water and whatnot. So why haven't we had the flags back then because, uh, payroll wasn't letting my people go? And, uh, we were talking about God's chosen people back then, the people that are at the promised land today. And I was thinking, uh, well, who would God's people be today? They would be the blacks, the immigrants, the Jews, and all the working people, the people who just work for a living. And today my people are the elderly people, the elderly, and I'm asking you for people like for the elderly, the people who live alone in their homes. If you shut these people's water off, they can live without water for three days. I know it's something about this personally, but we're not gonna talk about that, at least I'm, I'm just all bringing it up. So, uh, if my people go, uh, give my, rest of my favorites to, to the floor, whoever wants to talk. Any comments from the, the committee on, on your decisions or discussions about letting elderly people have some people out?
We, we normally don't make comment, uh, on, on the public comments at this time. We do however, uh, give a discount to the elderly over sixty-five. Uh, I think it amounts to about twenty-five dollars a month, so. Uh, anyway. Uh, anyone else for public comment? I don't, that's all I have signed up. Okay, we'll move on to item four, approved minutes of public hearing and regular meeting held September 13th, 2023, and a special meeting held September 20th, 2023.
Make a motion to approve minutes of public hearing and regular meeting held September 13th and special meeting held September 20th.
I have a motion of second, all in favor? Motion carries. Item number five is to approve financial report for September 30th, 2023.
Yes, sir, the general fund with, with our revenue was fifty-one thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty-two cents. The expenditure for five hundred and one thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirty-two cents. For one hundred percent into the fiscal year and we expended ninety-eight point one-six percent. The fund balances for September were six million, four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars and seven cents. Uh, I put it end of the year, pretty much, this is, uh, if you look at the sheet up here, this is what we budgeted for was four hundred and, uh, four million, six hundred and thirteen thousand, thousand, seven hundred dollars. And we actually, uh, at the, the total expenses at the bottom. Uh, so we ended up with, we brought in ninety-nine point six-six percent of the money that we said we would, and we expended ninety-eight point one-six percent of it. So we actually came in a little bit under budget in the general fund. Uh, water and sewer fund revenues were six hundred and eighty-four thousand and forty dollars and ten cents. We expended nine hundred and two dollars, uh, thirteen and eighty-nine cents. The reason it was so high, all of our insurance and everything was at the, at the end of the year, at this month, which was four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And we also, uh, bought an extra fifty thousand dollars worth of raw water because our reservoirs were getting so low, we, we pumped so much. So those were some of the things that, uh, that, uh, why that was so high this month. We are hundred percent in the fiscal year, uh, and expended one hundred and six point one-three percent and of a one hundred percent. Again, the balance was six million, four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars, three hundred and eighty-one and seven cents. Again, if you look at this, this year, we actually made one hundred and six point seven-eight percent of the money. So we actually made more money than we said we were, we budgeted for. And, uh, also, it doesn't take into consideration the two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars that we moved for the meters whenever we bought the extra thousand meters to, to change here. It actually came out at the bottom as we moved the money into, uh, utilities lines and plants. But since the money had been made before, I couldn't move it into revenue. So there was actually two hundred and four, if it would have been in there, there would have been an extra two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars in there, which would have been about a hundred and ten percent. So really, truly, we came out at one oh six seventy-eight and we spent one oh six point one-three. So we actually came in just a hair under budget.
Make a motion to approve the financial report for September 30th, 2023.
Second.
Have a motion of second, all in favor? Motion carries. Item number six, approve tax report for September 30th, 2023.
Chambers County, uh, September was forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety cents. The current L N B A collection rate is ninety-nine point nine-two percent. Last year at this time, uh, it was forty thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-two cents with a collection rate of one oh seven point five-two. Jefferson County, we received fifteen dollars and seven cents. Uh, the current rate is, uh, ninety-six point three-eight. Last year, we received no money at this time and it was ninety-five point nine-six percent.
Make a motion to approve tax report for January September 30th. So.
Have a motion of second, all in favor? Motion carries. Item number seven, review and consider approval of accounts payable.
Yes, sir, uh, accounts payable for September, accounts receivable was twelve thousand, uh, seven hundred and forty dollars and eighty-five cents. Some of these were very old and had been on the books for a long time. So I contacted our, uh, our accountant and we're writing some of this off that's uncollected. So, uh, these are hit fire hydrant, uh, broken meter things and charges for small stuff like that. It broke one of our lines and we can't get them paid. I think Kate is working on a fire hydrant part right now that their insurance should pay for, so, uh, we've talked, she's trying to collect them on Q O bars. Uh, accounts payable for the month was nine hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and six cents.
Someone's damages our lines, is that just an internal report or?
Uh, what we do is, uh, yes, sir, uh, uh, Michael will out and repair it and, yeah, people will and then we collect, uh, we see how much it costs labor or equipment and everything else. And if we mismark the line, it's our fault. If the block line was marked and they cut it or they did not call for a locate, we will bill them for. If you ran off the road, hit a fire hydrant, knocked it over, nine times out of ten, the police make a report on it. So we have a way to go back and charge their insurance company, things like that. But sometimes it's just not collected. The contractor leaves town, you never see it again.
Make a motion to approve accounts payable and receivables, really. Second.
Have a motion of second, all in favor? Motion carries. Item eight, considering possible action soliciting R F Qs for bank depository contract.
Yes, sir, right now our, uh, contract is, is what East Chambers Bank, or Anawak National Bank is the name of. But, uh, it's ten years old, we've extended it multiple times. Uh, so Kate suggested instead of just renewing it again, that we actually go out for bid. Interest rates have gone up tremendously. So as part of, uh, I think you have a copy of the, the request in there and it'll actually ask for C D rates and different things in there for our different accounts and stuff. So her suggestion was to go ahead and go out for, uh, R F Qs and, uh, see who has the best deal for us.
Are we limiting that to just banks or credit unions or?
Uh, they have. Sorry, we don't miss the fairing limit, but most of the time it's only banks due to the collateralization of public funds. So they have to be able to make sure that the public funds are collateralized and comply with the public funds investment. So, uh, most of the time you see banks are the ones who are going to be responding. Credit unions aren't, uh, prohibited from responding, it's just, just barely, a bank would be the one that could need all the criteria.
Was that Anawak State Bank over there that we were with before?
Well, it, uh,
Well, it's changed.
The name's changed, unless you got the name on Velcro now, but it's stellar now.
That's where we were before we went to Anawak Bank, East Chambers Bank, so we were with them before, so. Wait, ten years ago, we moved to East Chambers Bank.
Correct me if I'm wrong, when we bid this out, we give them so many years with the option we can renew?
Yes, sir, we did, and we've extended it multiple times.
Have we had any trouble?
No, sir, I've been very happy with them, uh, you know, you always run into a little bit of something here and there with everybody, but, uh, as far as, uh, Tan does a good job.
But you, but you just want to go out?
We will send it to Prosperity and we'll send it to East Chambers Bank and all the ones that are local here. Or it'll actually be put in the paper and they will respond to it.
Right.
And you should, and you can send it directly to any bank that you would like to respond to it.
And this will lock down the interest rate that we're gonna be charged?
Yes, sir, there, there's a, in the back, there's a list of, uh, how, how many, uh, how long and how much money and different things. So as a way to, to judge different banks versus just, I like them and I don't like them. There's actually something that you can look at, number wise, to choose which bank you would like.
Your intention is to do the same scenario of go with the bank and give the option to renew it?
Yes, sir.
After so many years before we rebid it?
Correct, we just have had this sort of requirement sometimes and all options to renew have been exhausted. And it's good to go out for, uh, R F Q for new depository every five to ten years. Some of our clients actually go out almost every two to five years, so, um, um, since you all have not done this in ten years, I would suggest.
Where I was going with that, with my question, line of question, we've changed board members so many times, so many times we've got to go back and get new signature cards. I'm surprised any bank wants anything to do with this. But I think we've got a board here that's gonna stay awhile now, so that's probably, you think that's funny, but I'm serious. But we, we, we will go out for bids and we will have a certain term with a, an automatic extension upon board approval. Just like it was before.
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion then to, uh, solicit R F Qs for bank depository contract.
I have a motion of second, all in favor? Motion carries. Item number nine, considering possible action renewing the raw water contract with Chambers Liberty County Navigation District.
Again, this is the same thing, if the, the contract is, is exceeding all of its, uh, automatic renewals and it's time to, uh, to renew the contract, they're the only game in town. So there's not, there's really no reason to try to go out and get another source. But, uh, they're, uh, thirty-three cents, uh, there's, and they're the same rate as L N B A, so, uh, but like I said, we had to take a bunch of extra water, we were getting to the point that we were starting to suck air in the reservoirs when we pulled them down so far.
But if you've got to up your.
Yes, sir, in fact, uh, Mike and I have talked about that, so we're gonna average out what we took and actually up the rate, cause it goes from like thirty-three and anything you take over, say thirty million that we have contract with, then it goes up to eighty-eight cents, so.
If you're ready to up the contract amount at thirty-three, then you go over the contract amount and have to pay.
You know, I said, so where it normally costs is twenty thousand a month, we paid fifty this month because we had paid at eighty-eight all over.
Well, all predictions as I've seen is that the, the following year is gonna be just as dry as this one. So don't look for a lot of rainfall to help you with your reservoir.
I believe I've read, I've upped it twice since I've been here, uh, with L N B A and with C L C and B for the amount of water that we were taking.
And that's figured, you're gonna figure that into this contract?
Yes, sir, what we'll do, we'll just write them a letter and say, hey, look, we, instead of thirty million a month, we want to take thirty-five million a month. And, and if we don't take it, uh, we, we still pay them the same amount. So it's, but it's at the thirty-three, so we'll have a set amount unless we go over it. But we were, it was in September and we were in hurricane season and we were low in the reservoir, so we took it.
Well, you remember about two terms ago, I asked you to keep that reservoir full, especially during hurricane season.
Yes, sir.
And y'all done an excellent job and I thank you for moving that along that road, it looks so much better.
You're welcome.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, renew the raw, raw water contract with Chambers Liberty County Navigation District.
Second.
Have a motion of second, all in favor? Item number ten, discuss and take action on 2023, 2024 board meeting schedule.
Yes, sir, this, uh, we tried to, uh, move them a little bit closer to the front of the month. Kate has all of her meetings at their end, so she likes to have them before the fifteenth. And plus, most of the, most of the time, that's when we pay our bills. So I tried to have it up till the eleventh or somewhere around there. At least give us a week and a half to, to be able to put all the reports together. So you can see how big the board reports are getting nowadays, so Crystal and the ladies here do a good job of, of putting all this together. So that, so we, we tried to move it to somewhere the fifteenth of November.
I have no problem with this, I'm making motion, we, uh, take action, uh, we go ahead with the twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four board meeting schedule.
Have a motion of second, all in favor? Motion carries. Item eleven, discuss and take action on the 2023, 2024 holiday schedule.
Yes, sir, these are the same ones we had last year, New Year's Eve, M L K Day, President's Day, Memorial Day, Juneteenth, uh, Independence Day, Labor Day, Veterans Day, and then we have two days for Thanksgiving and two days for Christmas. And each, uh, each employee gets two floating holidays for any kind of, uh, special religion or anything else that, that, uh, that they can take.
Make a motion to approve the 2024 holiday schedule.
Second.
Have a motion of second, all in favor? Motion carries. Item twelve, considering possible action requesting R F Qs for grant application development and grant management for the 2023 Fund of Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Grant Program, and/or Flood Mitigation Assistance Grant Program.
Yes, sir, we just did, uh, went through this process with trainer and associates and we picked L J I as the engineer for the severe winter storm. Uh, uh, one correction on the severe winter storm, they said that it was one hundred percent, but they've come back now and say it's seventy-five, twenty-five. But that's where we would go in and wrap the piping and, and harden everything, so, for winter storms. So we've already procured a trainer and associate to do that, to do that. So now what we're going out for is actually, uh, hazard mitigation program, possibly the bridges that we're looking at replacing on sixty-five and one twenty-four, which is coming up here in a minute, that we've, uh, we've, uh, had those funds to design the bridge. Cause this is actually going after the grant money to replace them. And again, it would be seventy-five, twenty-five, but there's, uh, so I looked at that, I looked at, uh, doing something with the lower end of May Hall down here, finishing the ditch up behind the park and expanding the ditch on the lower end to get the water out of town, possibly bringing another line up with the law and take care of the low side there, uh, uh, seventeen, uh, what is that, uh, over there by your house?
House sixty-two?
Uh, the one.
Twenty-nine thirty-six.
All right, twenty-nine, I don't go that way that much. But anyway, twenty-nine thirty-six, I took the engineer over there and we looked at doing a bypass for East Park and West Park, a couple of files, to help that in there, bring it directly into the, to the bank. So they've done that up in Anawak in Old Felton Lane. So most of these are what, on a deal like that, the first thing you do, you have to go in there and look to say the benefit is necessary and at least a criteria to be able to get grant money for. So some of these, I think, uh, May Hall is at the point where we've already done a study, so we're a little bit further head on in. But like the one that you're talking about there, we would put that in there and we would get money for, uh, to do all the study and everything else. And then the next phase, you would go back and they would give us money to actually design a project. And then in the third stage, you would get grant money to, to actually do the project. So this is what this is for, so this will actually go into the paper and I believe you have to send it to ten people. Uh, same way, uh, when, when our trader before, you actually physically have to send it to engineering firms on their list and also grant administrators on their list to be able to, uh, uh, I've been talking to Jeff Ward and associates, uh, I have a meeting, I met with the engineer yesterday and I'm meeting with them Monday. So anyway, so we're, all this is coming up for, and, uh, will need to be turned in around the end of November to December for the next round of all these grants. So we're putting that together with Cody right now to, to do all this stuff, so.
They give you a list of the ten contacts you got?
Yes.
And they're already.
Well, they give you a list of probably fifty in the state and you have to take this, you pick ten of them to go to, so there's no quiprover.
But this list is comprised of contractors that are already approved?
Yes, sir, L J. L J A, uh, John Bergen Pope, uh, all, all the ones in the area that are approved on the list. Fritz and Shipman, uh, probably something on, on a large scale, Freeze and Nichols, uh, Plumber. All these are on the list to be able, so we act, we act to email it to them. Same with the grant administrator.
Is something the county is doing also?
Sir?
Is this something the county is also doing?
Yeah, the county does the same thing. That in fact, uh, we did our hazard mitigation plan when I came back and the county is, I don't know if they renewed theirs or not, but theirs was renewed. So they were getting theirs renewed also, so they can do the same thing. So we're over that. Some methods put in for, for Spittletop, I'm putting in for Spittletop and whoever gets it first is, is how it works. Actually, we had good news for about two weeks ago. Uh, we put in for, uh, some with trailer, uh, previously to do two and a half, eight dollars worth on Spittletop. And, uh, we were contacted, uh, by the, by T E O and the G L O requesting more information. So that's a good deal. So they're actually looking at some of our applications to possibly get this done. Uh, at some point when the time comes to push, uh, I'll ask our representatives and everything to help push. So we're in, we're in the planning and, and building stage right now.
But if you get it approved, will you be able to backtrack into the work you've already done on Spittletop?
I don't believe we're in it. And I'm not saying I can't, but I think it's going to be kind of like, if you go pull your slab and then you go to the bank and borrow the money and build a house, they're not going to loan you money because, you know, uh, so, uh, but either way.
But the work you're doing on Spittletop is about an hour now, isn't it?
Yes, sir. And it's a seventy-five, most of, all of these are seventy-five, twenty-five. And the reason why I picked Spittletop and I picked, uh, uh, May Hall is because we can actually do the work and that's our 25% to put in. Now, the ones with the bridges where they're going to be eight, 10 million dollars, that's a seventy-five, twenty-five and somebody else would be building them. So, uh, we would actually have to come up with, with, with the matching money.
Where is the state on this?
Uh, at the, right now, the state, uh, the last meeting we had with them, uh, they, they finished the design and everything and bring it to them and we'll discuss it again.
But how much contribution are?
That right now, they, at whenever the first meeting we had, uh, Victor was there and I said, wait, no, this is over with and I'm asking, if we go spend a million too to design these bridges and put them in, uh, to put in, are you going to fund to replace them? And they told us, yes. The second meeting we went to, they, oh, you missed understood. Uh, and now it's to the point where, go ahead and put it together and we'll see. So that's kind of where we're at.
They're not saying no, but they're not committing.
They're not saying yes. Yeah, so they are getting, uh, and Terry Leo Wilson and every, they're getting pressure from everywhere. And as you know, the DeVeers and all those people north of I-10, their case is going to the Supreme Court for the flooding that they had north of I-10. So all of that, there's all kind of moving parts to this right now, so, uh, and they go into the Supreme Court pretty rough on Tex- side, so, uh, who knows in the future? That's all I can tell you right now is the first thing we have to do, we have to do, pay for the design and the county has split that with us. We put in six hundred thousand, the county approved the intermodal agreement yesterday for, for their six hundred thousand. So we're good to go.
Hey, it's just a sore spot where we've got to get the state's permission along the design and they're got, they may or may not chip in.
Well, their thing is there's nothing wrong with the bridges now and they're not the drainage business.
Well, maybe we need to bring Governor Happy down here and ride across some of these bridges.
This is, this is Terry Leo Wilson right here, that's Susan, that's with.
I know, sir.
Your office and, and she's been pushing very hard to help us and I agree.
With the state, the thirty-eight billion dollar excess in funds, they don't know where to spend it, I, we can, we can give them suggestions.
Yes, yes, sir. Best answer I can give you right now.
And I can tell you next, the Tex- guy says it's one sixty-five bridge, one twenty-four bridge or bottleneck. And until those bottlenecks are opened up, you're not pushing the boxes underneath there, they're sticking. Well, I understand all about the, the drainage, but what I, what I don't understand is the politics where the state feels like we should be the burden of building the bridges to their specification, they don't, they, they're not sure where they're going to chip in or not.
Well, this is also at the district office involvement, so.
They also admit the bottleneck is their two bridges. Oh, I agree. You also have to admit on most of the bridges on seventeen twenty-four, uh, nineteen eighty-five, where you, you hit a deal like that, it's from the, the, the interior of the water. It heats out the dirt behind the hard wall, behind the bridge. Every one of those bridges, you check, check these back roads, every one of them, I dare you to drive over forty mile an hour down there, across those bridges.
So anyway, this is, uh, we have to procure a grant administrator and an engineering firm, uh, to be able to apply for these grants.
I make a motion, we move forward on the RFQs for grant application development and grant management for 2023 Funding and of Hazard Administration Grant Program, Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Grant Program, and/or Flood Mitigation Assistance Grant Program.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries.
The second one is to, is RFQ for the engineering part. First one was for the grant management and thirteen is for, so it's the same exact thing except this one is the hazard mitigation. The engineering.
Make a motion, go out with RFQ for engineering services proposal for the A G P brick and F M A programs.
Second. I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries. Item fourteen, considering possible action, action entering into a three-year contract with Monroe's for uniform service not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
Yes, sir. Uh, we buy uniforms for our employees every year and it's getting down to where we, there's not very many around anymore. And they really don't want to just sell us the clothes, they want to actually use the service. And I, I budgeted enough money in there to, uh, take care of this this year. And this would mean that they'll actually clean their clothes, they'll bring them back here, starch and iron, and our employees will look at it. They will get nine sets that way there and a fresh set every day. So they'll pick them up on Thursday, take, take them in, wash them, dry them, starch them, bring them back. And then the following week they would do that. And, uh, I think it makes us look good in the public for them to be well tattered and look nice.
This is not charged back to the employee?
No, sir. Uh, we, we pay to buy them, normally we buy them five sets and they, they take them home and wash them themselves. And so this way, actually, the company will do it. If there's any tears, they can repair them. If they're too bad, they replace them for free. If a guy quits and doesn't bring them back, we don't have to pay for it.
Well, I make a motion, do we enter into a three-year contract with Monroe's for uniform service not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries. Item fifteen, May Hall Bayou Articulated Block update.
Yes, sir. Uh, this is, uh, we were, uh, the county received a one million dollar grant to, for the articulated block that we stopped over here, uh, behind the park. So anyway, the, uh, the G L O and the county have signed a contract to have that done. And I just wanted to give you an update that the, uh, contact, contract was executed nine eighteen and that's a contract number. And so they will be going out for bids here pretty soon, the same thing, to hire a, a contractor to, to put these articulated blocks in. I tried, that was like the second day I was back and they called, can you spend the money? So I found a place for, so something that we needed and was able to spend the money for. But we, we didn't have time to be able to force the county. So they're going to have to, they had to hire a contractor to do it. So I just wanted to let you know that we met, uh, with the G L O and the, and the county and every, the engineering company and everybody. So it's moving forward.
There's none, no.
No, so no action needed. I just want to let you know that, uh, that's another million dollars for training back.
Very good. Item sixteen, considering possible action installing surveillance cameras at both the water plants with advanced systems.
You know, Mike will spend money. But, uh, actually, uh, our insurance provider, whenever we pay for our insurance, they required us to put a, a fire monitoring system in the water, both water plants in case, say, electric motor caught on fire or something, it would contact somebody. Uh, we had somebody hit into the west water plant here about three weeks ago and go around inside. So, uh, I figured while we were having the advanced service to go out and, and put the fire monitoring system in, we'd go ahead and put a camera or two up out there, that way we could monitor the plants.
You remember, sir, we had a boat stolen with the Winnie Plant?
Yes, sir. And they also went and, and unbolted the tin on the back of that building there in Anawak and stole all of our weed eaters and everything out of it. So since we were investing in, uh, like I said, fire, they, what else did they require? They required, what was it?
Yeah, they required some SOPs for us to do as far as, uh, safety checks throughout, uh, our facilities. There was, there was about three items like that that we've got to do self, uh, checks on for, for security for fire and, uh,
hot, uh, hot zone, like if you were welding or cutting, you have to lock out, tag out, all these kind of things. He had to, he's got to put a scope of work together to be able to do that. So our insurance company required us to.
Yeah, they inputted on all the motors, all the, uh, switchgear and stuff like that.
Would advanced system notify law enforcement, sure they'd pick up on something?
Yes. They do here, we have advanced systems here for the front and the back. And the first thing they can do is call the law enforcement and then they'll call me. And if I don't answer, then it goes down to David and so on down the line. But normally they'll call and, uh, it'll be six-thirty in the morning and I know somebody's here. So, uh, so I'll just tell them to cancel the, the police and give them our code word. Also, our surveillance, uh, camera system's here, I can slide onto them with my phone and rather than me coming down here in the middle of the night, I'll turn the camera to only look. And it might be a rat run across the, set off the motion detector or something, you can't ever tell. So anyway, so this is what we're asking for, to, to put some surveillance cameras. And we, uh, they're asking us to put the fire monitoring system in, so it's all part of it.
Well, I'll make a motion that we install the surveillance cameras at both water plants and use advanced systems. So.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries. Item seventeen, considering possible action installing fire monitoring systems at both water plants with advanced systems.
I split it, one was cameras and one was fire monitoring.
With the same motion, won't it cover both these items? Okay, well, I'll make another motion to install a fire monitoring system at both water plants with advanced system.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries. Item eighteen, considering possible action accepting a 20-foot drain easement from Wonderful Bees LLC on FM 1406 at Deville Road.
Yes, sir. The board approved, uh, uh, rerouting that ditch several months ago. And we were able, uh, this is just putting the easement documents into the record and following it at the courthouse that we actually have an easement there. So the ditch has already been done and all the improvements have been done. And, uh, but this is just putting it into the record, uh, for future and, uh, and following it at the courthouse.
I make a motion, we accept the 20-foot drain easement from Wonderful Bees LLC on FM 1406 at Deville Road.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries. Item nineteen, considering possible action accepting a 20-foot drain easement from A R M A Real Property LLC on FM 1406 at Deville Road.
Yes, sir. This is the same ditch, uh, the ditch comes up and then 20 feet from the ditch is where the property line is. So A, um, A R M A owns it from 20 feet this side of the ditch to the ditch. So I had to get 20-foot easement from them to get into the ditch. And, uh, one of the agreements I did with them is I put pipes in so they could drive across the easement to mow their stuff. So we did all that too. So this is safe, that recording it into the record, that way it's for future use and recording it at the courthouse.
I make a motion, we accept the 20-foot drain easement from A R M A Real Property LLC on FM 1406 at Deville Road.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries. Item number 20, considering possible action to approve resolution 23 dash 21 accepting a water main constructed for Anawak Primary School located at 2024 Belton Lane for operation and maintenance.
Yes, sir. Uh, they're building a, a new school there. So we put a, a six-inch loop or an eight-inch loop around the school, uh, with fire protection. There's fire hydrants on it. So, and our water meters are in there. We're also in a G S U easement, uh, right next to it. So there's no private water system within our stub. So we accept that eight-inch water main for, for, uh, maintenance. And that also guarantees that we repair the fire hydrants and take care of the water meters and everything. Since there's no private water system that allowed in our district.
But they put it in?
Yes, they did. They pressure tested it and, uh, backed it and everything else. And it's a, this is like us accepting a subsidy.
You, uh, we already have a main that comes off of five sixty-two retired, when we ran that water line for the city that time.
That's a twelve.
Around to go to Smith Point, oh, about.
Yes, sir. There's a twelve that goes down there and that's.
What size meter do they request?
They, we're putting in a three and a four. We've got two eight-inch tangs for that loop system though. And they've got three, I think, for irrigation and a four for the.
One will be for fire protection, that will be for potable water?
Uh, I believe from what I understand, I may be wrong about this, that the eight-inch do with the, uh, I think they're, I think they're going to have a fire line in there, Greg? Yes, that's correct. So the eight-inch will circulate then with the fire protection hydrant to rent in addition to it.
But the difference is, is we used to, we would put a, a meter on the fire line and nine times out of 10, you never had the problem habit. So you're investing 10, 15,000 dollars in a six-inch meter to be able for a fire. So what I do, I just charge them a flat hundred-dollar fee every month and there's no meter and, and no maintenance. Okay?
Well, I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve resolution 23 dash 21 for a water main constructed for Anawak Primary School located at 2024 Belton Lane for operation and maintenance.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries.
Also, while we're on that, uh, we came out of the, the school there with a sewer main and went down Belton and we dropped back into Anawak's manhole there close to five sixty-two?
Three.
Seven, three, okay. So they, the original plan was to go all the way around there and come back in. So I got, uh, so anyway, they're going straight down Belton and, and tying in there, but it will be our sewer. But it will be our sewer that we build the fire. And then Anawak will build us like they normally do as a percentage we put into the plan.
I noticed they put the fire hose up yesterday.
Yes. I went to commissioner's court yesterday and drove through there, took a look at it, they're coming along.
Item twenty-one, considering possible action signing a one year contract for an emergency notification system with a regroup mass notification.
Yes, sir. What this is, is a service just like Chambers County Warren or something. One of the main complaints that we have, if we shut the water off, nobody notified us. And if it's an emergency, you really don't have time to notify. So what this does, this will be a one year contract and the reason why is one year to see if we like it or not. But what this does, this is actually where I can pull up a map and I can pick, pick the neighborhood. Say we have a blowout or stoppage or whatever it is we want to put on there. And it will actually send them hashtags to everybody that lives there or email or phone number, whatever. However, we have them set up in the system. So it will take a little bit of setup to get everybody's text and then all this other kind of stuff with the phone numbers they have. So, and then also it'll do all, all of the west side or it will do the whole thing. So we can, we can choose where and when we want to put out notifications and warnings. Now we put it on our website, so if you don't go to our website, you don't know. So this is one of our main complaints that somebody in the shower and shut the water off and they're full of soap or whatever and they can't. So we're trying to address that with, Susan, you just went through that, I'm sure, with the leak we had over there last weekend?
Yeah, I didn't know anything about that, about water leaks.
Yes.
So I didn't have all this information. And I'm like, I called and they said unless your water was shut off, you don't have to boil it. And so then later that night, people started, you know, start seeing on Facebook and I'm like, nobody told me to put the official word out in the neighborhood that we were under boil water. So it kind of looked like a way of doing what you're supposed to be doing. That emergency system would be great.
So they were addressing that with this, and we're gonna try for one year. There was two or three other companies out there. This one looks like it would fit our needs, but so we're gonna give it a try.
Do you have a cost estimate?
Yes, sir. For the first year, it's five thousand two hundred, that setup and everything. That'll give us two hundred eighty-five thousand credits. For each credit, a text message or a phone call will take up one of those credits. So it's more than enough for both sides by far.
The five thousand two hundred covers that, the whole?
For one year, yes, sir.
For one year. Does that include helping to set up the system?
Set up and set up and everything. And in this system right here, from what I understand, there's gonna be a web where customers can go in and sign in how they want to be notified, where they live at, their phone numbers or texts or calls, whatever they like. Or we can do it in-house as well. So there's multiple ways that they can get that data in.
Pretty much same as Chambers County Warren. You can go in there and you sign up and if something happens, they send you an email or a text.
So once we sign the contract, then they, they take over from there?
No, we will have to, we will have to actually decide to put it out.
I'm not gonna say that, but they, once we sign the contract, then they come in and they get everybody's phone number and contact information.
They work with us on that. I'm not sure exactly how much they'll do. Their system will also integrate with a lot of systems. I don't know whether we will allow us, but that's one of the things that we've got to find out. If the information that we have, some way that we can pull that data back over to theirs and then it can be downloaded automatically. So that's one of the things we've got to look at.
Okay, okay. Because I can see this being a lot of.
A lot.
A lot of the office type work prior to board.
I think it will be.
We should have majority that, in our work management system for billing and everything, we have everybody's name and a phone number, contact and so on and so forth. I think what you're gonna run into, if it's a house phone. And there's not, there's a few hanging on with a house phone and not very many.
And you'll be able to select which way you want to be notified, the email, text, phone call, or just whatever you decide.
Okay, good. I make a motion, we enter into a one year contract for emergency notification system with regroup mass notification.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor? Motion carries. Item twenty-two, considering possible action declaring the following equipment to be surplus property to be sold at auction.
Yes, sir. We have a two thousand eight Ford F-150, two thousand, uh, ten F-250, two thousand one Ford F-350, F-2013 Ford F-350 and a ride of cutter. On the water, we have a two thousand eighteen Ford F-150. And we have some old cell phones, old printers, computer screens, two keyboards and a couple of desks. And all of this will be put together with pictures and information and taken to home and auction to be sold. So if you have an extra vehicle around here, somebody wanna, wants to drive it, so like time, so. The best thing to do since they're, they wore out this time ago.
We've had pretty good luck with home auctions now.
We've had really good luck with home auctions.
Well, I'll make a motion that we declare the following equipment surplus property and be sold at auction.
Thank you.
Motion in a second, all in favor? Motion carries. Item twenty-three, discuss and take possible action to approve resolution twenty-three twenty-two authorizing the submittal of one or more DR forty-seven oh five HMGP applications to the Texas Department of Emergency Management. Authorizing the general manager to act as the district's authorized representative in all matters pertaining to the application and committing matching funds.
Yes, sir. This is the freeze money. And this is where we will put, I had a meeting with the engineers yesterday. And we're gonna be on site next week and we're looking, looking at wrapping some of the outer pipes. And we talked about possibly putting some kind of building over altitude valve there and so on and so forth. So we're gonna put that together. We've, we've hired LJA and trailer to do this work. So it's now, it's time to put a scope of work together of what we want to do and how much it's gonna cost so we can submit this. And you're giving me the authority to submit it.
I've got a question on if we build a building around critical equipment, heating it. Are you gonna put in like a propane fired heater or are you looking at maybe a?
Electric, probably.
Electric?
Yes, sir. I think the, your chemical building now has got electrical heaters in it?
We do, yeah, on both sides, we do.
They're actually the big ceiling hanging type.
But they'll be electric?
They're electric, yes, sir. I don't believe we have gas.
Well, you'd have to have a tank. My concern was the hazard of having an open flame in a chemical building. That's, anywhere chemicals were stored.
Yes, sir.
You wouldn't, you certainly wouldn't want to have an open flame.
Yes, sir. And, and also in the pump rooms, there's, there's electric heaters in those. So, so anyways.
This is the critical part we had trouble with last year.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, but two years ago, we really had the issue then and that storm caught everybody by surprise. Last year we were pretty much ready, you know, we had all of our tarps and heaters, propane heaters.
So it was two years ago?
It was two years ago, it was a big one yesterday. Make this figure where it'd be two years.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution twenty-three dash twenty-two and submit one or more DR forty-seven oh five HMGP applications to the Texas Department of Emergency Management authorizing the general manager to act as the district's authorized representative in all matters pertaining to the application and committing matching funds.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor? Motion carries. Item twenty-four, considering possible action, action entering into an interlocal agreement with Chambers County to pay LJA Engineering to design two bridges to improve drainage on Spinal Top Bow at State Highway sixty-five and one twenty-four.
Yes, sir. Kate and Nathan Bradenmark, that's the county's attorney, worked together on the interlocal agreement between the two of us. The way it's set up, the Trinity Bay takes the lead on this and actually oversees it. And as we are billed, then the county will pay their share. So we will actually pay LJA as they do the design work. And we'll send the bill to the county and they will reimburse us for their half. So they committed six hundred thousand, we committed six hundred thousand. So the commissioner's court passed it unanimously yesterday.
And what if LJA's price increases?
I don't believe it can, to be honest with you, because he gave it to us in writing that that's what it is. The next.
And it's just design.
It's, it's to design.
It's to design, yes.
So, but any more than that, he loses.
Okay, so he's working off a lump sum contract?
Yes. He, he gave us a lump sum contract. We just pay six hundred thousand dollars and then one point two designs both bridges. And that's with the traffic plan and everything to go with it. Because tech's dog wants, I have everything, how are you gonna do this? So all of that environmental, everything is part of what LJA is. Only thing that might come into play is if there's any utilities or anything in there that have to be relocated. That's unforeseen right now. So let's say there's a fiber optic line right beside the bridge and they need to move over, move it over ten feet, drill a new line in or something like that. But that would, that would be in the construction.
I'll make a motion to enter an agreement with the interlocal agreement for Chambers County to pay LJA to design two bridges to improve drainage on Spinal Top, State Highway sixty-five, one twenty-four.
Sir.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor? Motion carries. Item twenty-five is considering possible action entering into the agreement with LJA Engineering to design two bridges crossing Spinal Top Bow at State Highway and at State Highway sixty-five and at State Highway one twenty-four, not to exceed one point two million dollars.
We just pretty much.
Same thing, yeah.
This is just a pretty big agreement, and LJA's cost, which is not to exceed the whole. The other initiative entered into the agreement with the county. This initiative entered into the agreement with LJA for the foundation services.
Well, I make a motion, we enter into an agreement with LJA Engineering to design two bridges crossing Spinal Top Bow at State Highway sixty-five, one twenty-four, not to exceed one point two million dollars.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor? Motion carries. All right. All business. Move on to drainage report. Amos, what you got for us today?
Speaking of Spinal Top, so we're gonna start at, this is where I dragged my actually recently finished up that west fork that section area restarted, finished that up on the third. We got it moving around, we start on the little east fork. Now we'll carry it all the way into take ten before we move it down to the bottom. I think this is looking at the feeder road, looking downstream of that west fork. There's, they clear out all of that, there's communications and stuff right there next to the feeder road. We did, we did what we could right there to improve that. But it's pretty well open all the way through now, through that whole section. That takes it all the way to sixty-five from Interstate ten to sixty-five. And on what the guys are doing on the bottom, we worked up to a, a section there with the green line that come from the south. Worked up to that section in the green line and then had to move around and come back at sixty-five going south. And this is, this is, I'm, I'm on Spinal Top a little downstream from sixty-five, looking back towards sixty-five with what those guys are doing, correcting that shelf and able to. The biggest thing that we're looking at is where the tree is and stuff in the bottom. That's the stuff that we're trying to get out of Spinal Top to increase the water. There's, there's a gut, a large gut down in there. And there's sandbars and all kinds of stuff that we can, we can remove out there to float. So we got those three, three pieces of equipment down in there working that. Yes, sir.
We've only got a forty-two foot wide easement in the bottom of the ditch with a one to two slope with the building to put as much fall as we need to on the side. So if we were to widen the ditch down there anywhere, we would have to buy some more easement. And that is in one of the grants that we applied for, the two and a half million dollar grant. So we'd have to go in there, we would have to buy some more easement. Right now it's only forty-two foot wide at the bottom. So I just can't go widen the ditch. Because of what we're planning on. So.
All right. And then that's, that's a view from sixty-five. Let me see some of the equipment looking on that upstream, that downstream section there. I'd say that, that new goze is working out quite nice. Okay, on the next section, map three, this is the section of East Fork, double valve. This is where our new reefer con has been, all the red has been, is what he's cut up to. He's actually on the main, on the far east side over there now where he's at, working at, working towards sixteen, sixty-three. Got all that tuned up looking pretty good. The next, the next machine on map four is, is another section of East Fork. So those, these two machines will essentially would, could meet up at a fork. In this part of the ditch coming off of Hamilton Latchel Road, you could hardly see the ditch when he, when he started. It was pretty, pretty grooved up through there. He's got it, this is the long reach with the grinder, one of our new remotes who's working that area. And then moving on, we talked earlier, items eighteen to nineteen on the agenda, we talked about the ditch replacement. Once we got very big to the green line, we went to work and got that ditch cut and the pipes installed and all that turned out quite nice and you guys did a good job there. And we, now we started the walk back. We had agreed to, really when we built the concrete bridge for Garden Boss, there was the bridge that was there. We agreed to relocate that bridge to replace that one that's dilapidated and in rough shakes. And that's the bridge that we drove, actually drove that bridge down to that location. And they started on that this week.
Garden Boss agreed to pay ten thousand dollars in piling to put that, that other bridge on. So they, so they're actually paying for the materials and all we're doing is setting it up there for you.
You're gonna grind a pile with a hammer or are you gonna?
Yeah, yeah. A laboratory hammer, yes, sir. Yes, we'll drive H beam legs, put a H beam cap on it and weld that bridge down to it. The, the old bridge, that one there, it's got I beams like a foot apart. It's a pretty stout bridge. Once we get it anchored down, it's, it'll be there. And then lastly, that's our spray crews that we still have. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. The, we did finish the low water crossing, it was on last month's transit report at Donny Lord Pannas. It was something that was on the list we were supposed to do. So we took it, added some sheet pile, steel sheet piles to the upstream side. Cleaned out all of the stuff that had broken away where the water had actually washed around it. So we shored that up and got that all tidied up, should, should maintain and do what it's supposed to do now. That's kind of what it looks like from the down, that's the downstream side. Sorry about that here. And like I said, last lot, not least the spray crews. We got one rig, keep them one rig ready to go and they'll spray up until first cross. Mark wanted me to mention that we're looking into fall helicopter application. They're gonna try to cover an estimated forty miles of, so equal to a hundred acres. And also looking at trying to seize some areas of Spinal Top that we have spent all that time trying to redevelop, get straighter. And that's all I have.
All right, thanks Amos.
Yeah. Yes, sir. Y'all still on breakage?
Yes, sir.
There's, I didn't see any vegetation in any of these pictures right here, but I've got vegetation that covers the whole ditch. Put that aside a second. Vegetation is my ditch, well not mine, but the ditch, y'all's ditch is down in my area.
Vegetation is my ditch and, well, not mine, but the ditch, y'all's ditch is down in my area.
All right. We will, uh, do they still have the booms in there, anybody in there?
Yeah, it's just vegetation.
Yes, sir.
The ditch dried up on me.
Okay.
And then where y'all sprayed with helicopter, it's solid vegetation.
Okay.
And I'll just let y'all know.
All right. We'll, we'll, we'll get it on our schedule.
Creative problem with it ever raining.
Yes, sir. We'll put it on our schedule.
And then, those are the structures I put in?
Yes, sir.
How long do those handle?
Uh, I think
Since high.
Yes, sir. I did call to control on my list to do this year and, uh, have it tested all.
I, I'm glad, I had to see nobody come.
No, they haven't. They haven't been tested since we installed them. They have, do have connections on the side where total control can come in there and see how much, uh,
That's two structures to lose.
Yes, sir. I agree with you. Uh, it's been on the line, you haven't done it or tested.
Well, it's been on the line by a lot more than your line.
I don't know. I think about seven lines.
But anyway, I just want to bring it to the ditch.
Yes.
Uh, Brad, he likes to follow up on some of that stuff. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Drainage report. Mike, before you start, I want to commend your group on fixing all these blowouts.
They've done a good job.
They, they work nights and weekends and, and we, they keep the water flowing. Uh, I'm under a boil water notice at my house right now, but that's okay. We, we, we still have water. So, uh, we, I appreciate it. I'm sure the rest of the board does as well.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. They do a great job. Thank you. Um, I'll see you later. The first thing that I have up here is, uh, is update on the water and sewer line repairs since the September meeting. On the west side, we prepared approximately fourteen water main breaks and twenty-two sewer line breaks. On the west side, we repaired approximately eleven water main breaks and eighteen sewer line breaks. Uh, the TCEQ did perform that wastewater inspection at Spinal Point on the twenty-seventh of September. The only issue that they found was grass that had been cut around the alcohol. We've cut the grass and sent the documentation into the TCEQ. Have not had a response back from them as of yet. Uh, we received, uh, the latest copper sample results from the west side of the district. Those results, uh, will be sent out actually today. I've got everything, uh, waiting for the mail to be picked up. And all samples were below the TCEQ action level. Uh, the past few months, we've noticed some scaling issues at the west, uh, water treatment plant. We sent in raw water samples to our lab to be analyzed. The several result, results show a high concentration of manganese. Uh, I've discussed this with our chemical vendor and our engineer. The most common way to control manganese is to use a polyphosphate. Polyphosphates are used as a sequestered agent. They keep iron, manganese and calcium in solution, therefore preventing the formation of precipitants. That could deposit scale or cause discoloration. If a polyphosphate is used, we will have to get approval from the TCEQ along with, uh, our engineer will have to assist us with that. Let me engineer. Uh, the last thing that I have here is the completed water and sewer installations. We've, uh, for, as far as water line extensions, we've done two hundred and sixty foot. We did two hundred and sixty foot sewer line extensions. One gravity tap, six grinder stations installed, uh, two thousand and seven feet of grinder station discharge line. We installed thirty-one new water meters and those two eight inch water tie-ins over there for the new school in Anawak. And we installed four drop-in meters for the new subdivision, uh, Cypress Point. Uh, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
No questions. Any reason to go to executive session?
No, sir.
Very good.
I got one thing and it's basically, I know everybody knows it, but I want to remind everybody. The, you know, with dry weather, we, we had a lot of cracks happening because of the ground movement, getting moisture in the ground. Same thing all over. Got the inverse. So, that's probably why a lot of these people are seeing my area seeing now. So, unfortunately, with the dry weather, wetter, wetter, getting, that doesn't mean we're not going to have any line breaks. Probably still going to have the same issue, but it's just one of the nature of these.
That's right. The last couple of ones that we've had, uh, David and I, we've been talking about how major they were due to the lines just actually splitting. We've seen some AC lines that split that we've never seen happen before, having three foot split. They usually just pop straight around. These are actually splits down the line. So, Yeah, you're exactly right. When this ground starts getting some moisture back in, it's going to shift back. Well, hopefully we'll have as many as we can see. They have slowed down, but we're still having them.
My experience over the years, it's not just plastic type does. I've seen threaded metal pipe. Just same thing, a brick or a collar.
Yes, sir.
It's just you, you're not going to stop them.
That's correct. That's right.
It's a dumb boat plate. It's, it has a very low plasticity range, which means it doesn't bend. It breaks.
It don't flex much. Yes, sir.
But you've done a heck of a job.
Yes. Most of the guys in the field there are doing it.
Yeah.
You guys have done a great job.
We thank you guys.
Yeah, thank y'all.
We've had, uh, a, a good year, in my opinion.
Make a motion, what is it, Jerry?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? We are, Charlie? Are you kidding me? Thank you for reminding me that. Victor, you're very courteous.
Y'all are the sound. Not good. None of y'all caught that? That's what I mean.
That's what I'm saying.
No, the man, my people, I put him there. Uh, they were talking about shut off, uh, my water. Is it shit off my water? Mike caught it. That's what I'm saying. Change it. It's the one I sent y'all. It's not the his.